This is the October meeting of the Dyton zoning board of appeals. I'm the chairman, Bob Adams. This is Zach Karen, Jason Quinn, and Tim Rhines. I'd like to do the pleasure of allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna do the whole business here. This is, uh, apparently he's not showing up, Mr. Zola.
Uh, I received an email this morning saying that he will not show up tonight.
Okay, so we're just gonna continue this till the next November meeting. That's the case. Oh three eighteen, right?
Yep.
Do we have to vote on that to carry it over to next month, or no?
Yeah, we do. I imagine someone's gonna be gonna-
The voting members are Mr. Robert Adams, Jason Quinn, and Zachary County-
All right, I'll step down, make a motion, and continue this to November meeting. We haven't established what they get.
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
I think-
Okay. So now the two, the number two is gonna be the review and discuss the, yet the third application? Uh, ten eighteen.
Uh, application ten eighteen. Now, do you have a copy of the general? And you're saying-
You got it marked on mine as number two.
Okay. Um, case, which case? Ten eighteen?
Ten eighteen.
Okay.
This is the same individual, Mr. Zola from Dyton Woods. I'm gonna give you a brief rundown as to what's happened in this particular. He made an application to the board through the secretary, and he didn't, uh, have the proper information that we had requested, and he led us to believe that he did. So we went forward and time-dated it and had put it on tonight's agenda. Well, he's not here tonight. I'd offer him to make a motion to, to withdraw until we get the proper stuff. But I'm just gonna make a motion, or have someone make a motion to just dismiss the case, and we'll hold on to his fee till he contacts us.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to withdraw case number ten dash eighteen, Dyton Woods' application text.
And the reason is because he didn't submit the proper information?
Reasoning being, he did not submit the proper notification, or information.
And there was, anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, the next thing is that he has a fee that's held with that, the application fee. And, uh, we're gonna speak to him about it, but we're thinking about having to transfer it into the fifty-three G account because he, he pays for most of the, uh, legal parts of it, but there isn't enough money in there to cover the legal fees that we're covering here now, so we're gonna discuss that with him. We'll make that decision at the next meeting.
Sure.
Is that all right?
I'll include that on the agenda.
Okay, case number, that was ten eighteen, I got the case number. Eight eighteen, uh, one fifty Center Street, construct detached accessory garage with attached accessory apartment? Did you present it?
What am I gonna have for you, boy, number one?
Well, you're the secretary.
Yep. I'll let him know before you go on, that's all.
Now, we, this case, basically, this case was heard before, before, and it was approved, by the other applicants that were all in approval on this, are no longer on the board.
Okay.
I'll let them present their case, so we can't have, like, the three same members.
Okay, so there'll be myself, uh, Tim Rhines, and, um, Jason Quinn.
You narrowed it down a lot.
Yeah, really.
Not much of a choice.
No.
Okay, good.
Um, so hi, my, good evening. My name is Mandy O'Donnell, um, over at one fifty Center Street in Dyton. This has been Matt. Um, so we're here tonight on, as you said, case number ten, uh, eight eighteen, and our thing is also noted as nine eighteen. Um, we are seeking a petition for a special permit and variance for our home. Um, we are, again, as briefly stated by the chairman, we previously received approval for this by a prior report in June of two thousand fourteen. Due to other reasons, what we had expired. Um, in essence, in a nutshell, what we're looking to do is we are looking to, um, build, um, a detached two-stall garage with an accessory apartment, um, in the back of it, for my parents who are older, um-
Elderly.
Elderly, oh, they wouldn't like that word. For my parents who are older, who are both retired. My dad, um, being disabled, um, has had two prior back surgeries. They presently live in Somerset. We are trying to get them down this way. We have been for the past few years. So we're not doing double duty. Um, the reason we're seeking the special permit, um, is we understand under the code that, um, a accessory apartment normally has to be attached. Um, our arguments to the board and neighbors last time were that it really, um, is out of character with our neighborhood and our home. We have a older historic home, and again, you can read the last decision. We put some pictures there. What we consider historic and where we would normally attach it, we'd probably be having to get rid of some of our existing built-in fireplace, et cetera, like a whole, basically, wall of our house of where we would attach this, um, and make our house look like, I'll call it Nick Mansion sort of monstrosity. Um, we included in our petition some pictures of all of our surrounding neighbors, and you'll see in there that really everyone kind of already has a detached structure from their house. Maybe not with an apartment in it, but our goal is we don't wanna look like we have an apartment. We don't wanna look like we just have a garage, and there's gonna be an apartment behind it. Um, getting into the apartment itself, aside from the reasons of it being detached, um, we are looking, um, I guess that's part of the variance as well, um, from it having to be to the home, is that we're, we're trying to keep it as accessible as possible for them. Um, not quite sure if we'll have a ramp, uh, if we do this, but we're looking to have as many steps in and out as we can. Uh, we want, again, the apartment to be behind the home as opposed to above it, so they can come in. Um, if you wanna interject here, and you can, and I'm probably forgetting things. Um, it's, it's in essence the same of what we saw before. There are two, uh, differences, basically, in what we put through in two thousand fourteen. Number one is after consulting with a couple of other builders, we initially had had the setback of where the garage was gonna start from our, um, the back of our house was about twelve feet. And 'cause of the grade there, we were told we're better off moving it in, in the yard, again, not in-
Moving it back.
We're just moving it back, um, to be about twenty-five feet back, which would allow more room in between, and if we had to do sidewalks or ramps, as well, is it's a little bit lower there, again, for less steps. Um, the second difference is that the last time we didn't ask for, because we were unaware that we needed, until we got the final decision, um, I guess there is a height limitation on detached structures. Um, and we, um, it was twenty feet. Um, our plans had come in last time at twenty-four feet. Um, to that, I will say, again, above the garage is really just extra area for us because if we were attaching it to the house, we would be, we would be using that as part of the home. Um, this, that area is not too far as a department, but with our old house with a fieldstone foundation, it's basically sort of like a rec room for our son. But, um, we wanna be able to have a normal ceiling height in there, and, um, we, the four feet last time, we didn't put in four. Um, again, we, we talked about maybe lowering garages or doing whatever, but we wanna keep it so they can just drive in and get in their apartment without having to not have useful space above. Um, so we're asking for the variance for that four feet.
And that four feet is still below the overall height of our house, which is around thirty-one, thirty, almost thirty-two feet approximately, so it's still far shorter than our, our overall existing structure.
So, yeah, and that is what important thing. We did wanna note that what we're asking for, if we attached it to the home, presumably we wouldn't have that height limitation, and we're looking to sort of keep our, I guess, our roof lines in. If you see, we have pictures of our home there of how we have our high roof line. We kinda drop down, and the garage is in no way going to still be higher than, um, what we have as the existing top roof line. Um, so, um, if you have any questions that you'd like us to answer, we certainly can. Um, but we, you know, we resubmitted what we submitted last time with those two changes.
You mentioned that you're gonna set it back further away from the house. And is it gonna encroach on the backyard or side yards? Are all the same side yards setbacks?
Everything's the same.
Except those two things that you-
Correct. Everything's the same.
Jim, what is the maximum amount? Twenty-five feet in height? I know this is accessory apartment, so it's different, but on a regular-
Accessory structure is twenty feet.
Twenty feet. In a regular building is what?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. And you're not gonna exceed your existing height of the roof that you have there?
No, I wanna say our, and I'm sorry, I forgot to bring this measure. It would be like our top of our house is thirty-one or thirty-two.
The main peak of our house is thirty-two feet, and the secondary peak where the chimney is, is around twenty-five feet.
Okay, so this isn't gonna exceed that?
Yep, we'd be in line with that one. What about septic? Where's that being proposed to?
So, we, there is no proposed septic. Our existing septic would be removed last time on condition when we would be tying in.
We'd be tying in.
Tying into a stop.
We're gonna tie into the town.
Yes, that's why I drive.
Is there a stub already present there to tie him on?
There is, I believe, when first the laggy put the line in, I understand, is it the T-
We have a T juncture in place already. Yep, all we do is have to pay the, you know, dig out fee and the tie-in. Correct. So, our plan is to type all, both new properties into.
Mr. Chairman, um, I have, uh, I did receive an email, which I did include in packets last minute, regarding the septic and sewer line.
On them?
On them.
Was it approved?
Um, no, it was just talking about how there was the stub there, and there might be a couple extra stubs.
We're gonna add it in the mail, this is right. Any other questions?
Just out of curiosity, if, unless it's for personal reasons you don't wanna share, is there a reason why they expire the first time?
Um, sir, I can certainly go into it. Um, my parents, in a nutshell, um, we were very eager last time to move forward, and I guess in my mind, we kinda did things out of order. My parents had their house on the market. Um, they were, had it actually, they got an offer, and basically what happened with it, we'll just say that that sort of fell through, and we weren't through this process yet. They didn't feel comfortable selling the family home without an approval.
Without full approval and filing books, yeah.
And then, once that sort of fell through with some things changed with the market and what they were willing to get, and then life kinda ran away from us. We have a five-year-old who we, we do a lot with, so.
No, I'm just curious as to what changed.
In essence, if I have to say, that was the, that was the big, and then, then we'll say life. But that was the main reason of the timing. This time, we've sort of, we're, I believe we're working at the right way. We've had our survey. We've, we're, we're trying to do it, so we're, once we get this, we're literally ready to go as opposed to the other way. We got this first, knowing as homeowners we should've kinda come to-
Done a few steps first.
Done a few more things.
Just for my clarification, the fifteen-foot setback, that's from the building foundation and not the set of stairs that's on the side? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
According to, um, the building code and the zoning act, stairs are exempt from setbacks as long as that landing is the minimum size landing and rise and run of stairs. It would not include setbacks to a pleasure deck or something like that.
Gotcha.
Um, so if it's just a standard landing in stairs, then it can be exempted from setbacks.
Gotcha.
Now, um, detached garage, there'll be no living space upstairs in that?
No. So there is, we, like, again, we just, we could call it bonus area. There is to be some space up there, which we'd like to finish separate from the apartment. Again, with our home, we didn't quite give you pictures of our basement. We wouldn't wanna do, but, um, we, we're limited. We're never gonna be able to finish it or have any extra additional room unless we add another separate thing to ours. So we're looking to maybe make a rec room or something up there for our son. Um, and we did, you know, but didn't wanna just leave it as, as dead space, so. Um, not living area, but certainly, uh, we'd like to-
A usable space.
We'd like to make it usable, exactly, yeah.
I guess the only other thing I had was, and some new to this case, is, did you have any concerns last time when it came, came before the zoning board?
I did not. I actually concur completely with what was said tonight. Um, the character of the neighborhood, this is exactly what belongs there. Um, I think attaching it to the home would be a detriment, so I was in favor of it last time. Uh, we ironed out all the kinks ahead of time, so I'm in favor of it again.
Cool. Any voters here?
It'll be built in the same style as the home, if it's up front.
Yes. Is that current home, your, your current home, was that, um, on the historic registry? It's from the eighteen nineties, yes. I mean, we've been in discussions with the town as far as, like, in the past.
So I know that there's no formal historic registry, but we did include with our submission what we had previously from the historical society, um, you know, and as far as something formal, I don't think there was, you know, other than-
I don't think it's ever been registered.
Yeah, I was looking through the, um-
Post appear, yeah.
I remember back in nineteen twelve when I went by with the parade where they had it all back.
You know, it looked, it looked really, it looked really nice.
We've been, we've been trying to get it back.
Trying to get it back to that. Took a, took a while, but.
Yeah, I assume it's on the Mass Historical Commission's list, anyway.
So, again.
I personally definitely appreciate you guys coming back, but also doing your due diligence and homework and research again. So that's really nice to see. We have a lot of applicants that come forward that-
Don't.
Don't. Yeah, thank you. You don't. So it's, it's very good to see that.
All right, and we'll entertain a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, we accept case number eight dash eighteen and nine dash eighteen, one fifty Center Street, to construct a detached accessory garage with attached accessory apartment.
I'll second.
Would like that to add, uh, for the same conformity as the previous one. Is it, would that be allowed, same conditions?
Were there any conditions on the last?
We didn't, they didn't ask for height, uh-
No, so you would have to, um-
Definitely different though. Just leave it alone, okay?
Yeah, just leave it the way it was proposed. The only thing I would add is, um, that it be tied into municipal sewer.
And I'll make the motion that it be tied into, um, the Dyton, um, sewer system.
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you again for coming in.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Science is-
Very well presented.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Moving right along, yeah. What do you wanna do next?
Whatever you wanna do, for the chairman.
There are some people here that I would like to find out why they're here. Are they people all for the same thing? All right, who was here first? One stop?
We're here for observation. We're, property is on twenty-two Forestry, and Mr. Mauder, I believe, is, oh, hi.
I didn't realize they were here too.
Is, uh, trying to get a permit?
We're seeking, uh, to review, uh, current existing property to see if we need a special permit to tear it down and reconstruct a new property, new house on the property, but it's a non-conforming lot.
It's existing dwelling? Anybody living there?
Not that I know of. It's an old house, but in a rough shape. It's really not what-
What's the number?
Two, 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 triple two, uh, Forestry.
Okay. And what do you, you just wanna know if we can hear? You wanna-
I just wanted, I, I got the, I got the picture of the, of the property.
Well, you wanna know if we can hear this, is what you're asking?
Yeah, I wanna know if it's worth going forward to get a special permit.
I can't tell you that.
Why did you, your report, as far as, like, show you?
Well, what you want, you wanna, you're asking for a special permit to tear it down?
To mess with a special permit?
And rebuild?
Rebuild.
A non-conforming lot.
Not, not, not the same house.
An existing, non-conforming lot.
Right.
How long has it been abandoned? Or is it abandoned?
Um, I'm not certain, but the reason he is before you tonight is the house will not be reconstructed in the same footprint, so it'll be larger in area, which requires a special permit.
All right, well, that, we can definitely hear that.
Well, I just wanna know-
How's, how big is this lot?
It's very small. I think it's, uh, nine thousand square feet, or?
No.
It's bigger than that?
I think it's bigger. It's, it's, uh, it's just under seventy-five feet frontage, but it's really deep. It's over two hundred feet deep.
Okay.
Well, you know, we need to know all of that, and, uh, if it's a small lot like that, they don't usually allow it to go with a bigger footprint. I mean, to some degree.
Well, what I was gonna do, I proposed to do, the way the house is on the property right now, it's right on the property line. It's really distressed. I mean, push came to shove, possibly could be rehab, but it's not really cost-effective to do it. To, to the town's best interest, I think, would be to tear that down. And I can make the new structure conform in all the offsets, in every way. The only thing I can't make conform is the lot size. Like, I can meet the offsets.
Well, a lot size is, a lot size is a lot size. You can't make it bigger.
No, 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 but I can make it meet the offsets off the boundary. Right now, the current house is like, it's right on the property.
You said that. It's not that.
And what I can do is I can push it back. I can make it much more-
We, we obviously, we definitely can hear that. How the board will vote on it, it'll be the way you present it. You gotta come in with some type of size of difference in the, the amount of square footage.
Well, roughly the footprint of the house we're proposing is gonna be thirty by thirty-five, or thirty by four, depending on what the offset you're gonna require us. But based on the size of the frontage we have now, we should be able to do a thirty by four. We meet the minimum fifteen foot offset.
But what is the bait, what is the square footage of which you have?
It's like seven hundred or something. I mean, I have the public record, but I have to go on.
No, I don't wanna hear this until you pay the fine, pay the, pay the, uh-
It's really tiny. I mean, it's not what, and from what I understand, I talked to the builder inspector, we can't rebuild the house even that's in the location it's at. We have to keep the same square footage, basically. We can't even change it.
So, so there's two things, two comments, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I haven't done an inspection of the home, but the way it's described to me, it's in such disrepair that have I done one?
I'm pretty sure I know the whole story.
It may be coming down, so with that said, it may come into my, under my purview eventually someday anyway. Um, but as far as rebuilding is concerned, if it's that far along, even if I didn't declare it unsafe, I don't know that I would allow them to rebuild it. It's a fieldstone foundation. There's too many what-ifs. So it seems like the best thing to do, because it does have protections under the pre-existing nonconformity, would be to allow a rebuild.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing I may caution you is if you have a seventy-five foot wide lot with fifteen-foot setbacks on either side, that leaves you exactly forty feet to play with. Um, this case law that says if you're off by more than two inches, then you need a variance.
If you wanted, if, we could do it between thirty-five foot or forty feet. I mean, whatever your recommendation would be, I would say, it would just, we could just-
Without a lot, which should be taken care of when we do this discussion.
Yeah.
What you wanna know is if we can hear.
I just wanted to know if you can hear it, if it's worth presenting it, or if it's something that, it doesn't have a snowball chance.
Well, I don't, the, the-
It's a, it's a clear candidate.
It's a clear candidate.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure.
I can't tell you how the vote, the board's gonna vote.
No, I'm just trying to make it up.
Show us what you're gonna have. It, well, it's, he just expressed the feelings. The way it is now, it's deteriorating as we talk.
Right.
And so the, in the interest to, to, do we go forward and rebuild it? Is it gonna conform to the, uh, houses in the area? Is it big, are the lots, are the lots in that area seventy-five foot frontage?
There's a couple of them.
You gotta have a case. We'll hear it. It's that simple.
All right. So you would want, you would only bring the information about the other lots, or just show what I can do with that lot that's gonna-
Well, before you can do anything, no matter what anybody does or what anybody's, you're gonna get a permit to just smaller.
Yeah.
Okay, so that come before us. That's the first step.
Well, I gotta get the permit before these, he told me to not-
I would suggest, I would suggest you don't demo anything until you get your petition heard by the-
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Right. I didn't hear, I didn't say tear it down. No, but these are the things you have to do first. And if it's, uh, you know, it conforms to the other houses there, I don't wanna say, yes, go ahead. The board's gonna make their decision based on the evidence that you presented. But in the interest of the town, it would be better to, eventually it's gonna tear, be torn down anyway, so it would be better to upgrade. Now, you might wanna, they, the board might tweak you on it, the square footage and the amount, how they can condition it, and, uh, you go forward. I mean, it's a, obviously, it's a, it's a pre-existing nonconforming lot. But like you said, it's a stone foundation.
Yeah.
They might hold you to the same permit, but they could go up higher. You, I mean, there's a lot of things you could do with this property. But first, you gotta, you know.
Well, I just wanted to see if you asked me, I should come over here in front of the meeting and just get your feelings on it.
This is something we hear quite often.
Okay.
It's not something that can't be done.
Okay.
But it's heard quite often. Give us, you know, show us a plan and pay the fee and go, go from there. And you want, you're asking for two variances?
No, it's not a variant.
No, just a special permit.
Special permit to tear down and then just rebuild?
But on a larger footprint.
On a larger footprint. And we can restrict the footprint and size, am I right?
You could, yeah, if he must.
That would be the worst that probably would happen to you. You might get it restricted. I don't know, I, those are, that's a possibility. I'm just, you asked for feelings, that's a possibility.
Yeah.
Am I right?
Jim said we have to be a little bit more, not tight to the buffer. I could do like thirty by thirty-five, which would give us plenty of-
Try to come up with exact square footage on the lot too, so we, the board-
Oh, I can do that.
Nice, and, yeah, present, have that all presented to us, so that they can make their decision.
So I would just get the application and-
Go from there. Okay, you're next. Am I gonna be sorry I did this?
I don't know. I, I don't know what I'm doing. This is, this is all new to me. My name's Stephen Jones.
Yep.
I own two pieces of property on Middle Street in Dyton, seven twenty-one. Um, I have a, apostle on the back. There's twenty-one acres. It's a separate deed from the front deed. Um, what I'd like to do is sell the house out front, and I'd like to keep a strip. I have a, I have it on a map. I have a roadway that goes down to the twenty acres in the back. I'd like to break it off so I can have right-of-way to the property. I'm not gonna build, maybe I will someday, but I don't think I'm gonna. I just wanna be able to go down here when I wanna go and play. Um-
Does that lot that you're gonna be taking the right-of-way from, does that take away from their frontage?
Yes.
How, by how much?
Well, I don't know how much I can take away. I have a hundred-
Well, you'd have to ask for the variance on that. You'd have, we'd be creating a nonconforming lot. If it's a conforming lot already.
Yeah, I don't know where your frontage is now.
I have a hundred and sixty, I think a hundred and sixty-eight feet, or a hundred and sixty-six feet.
Town water, too.
Town water, too.
You need a hundred and seventy-five. So you'd have to be coming to us to ask us for a variance on that property that's got the hundred and sixty-eight.
I've got some paperwork.
To allow, how, how much footage, how much, you want forty feet?
If I can get forty feet, if I can't get forty feet, I'll go less.
Well, the way, I'm just suggesting you go with forty feet because-
Well, that's what everybody tells me.
That would access, we have it by law now for eight acre minimum with forty feet frontage. You could build a twenty-one acre, you have to go up your twenty-one acres. But the forty feet would still, that would be covered. You'd have to come and ask us for a variance on your existing dwelling.
Okay. That's what I have paperwork. I was talking with Nicole, right?
Mm-hmm.
I, this is all green to me and-
Is there anybody else in that neighborhood with less than conforming lots? Do you need to know all of that and bring, present that to us?
As well?
The abutters, the-
Yeah, my abutter is my brother.
Well, how much frontage? I'm interested in how much-
He's got a hundred feet.
But is it gonna, yeah, okay, there's, there's one answer. But other people, is this gonna take away from the detriment or, is that the right word?
Detriment.
Detriment of the neighborhood?
No.
Okay, well, you gotta ask your neighbors that. So you present it to us, show us what you have for evidence.
So, not tonight.
Not tonight.
No, I'm not saying that. It's like, do I need to go to my neighbors?
No, what you need to do, you're gonna have to, if you apply here through Nicole for a variance on the front house, am I right? You need to make that smaller with insufficient frontage. It already has insufficient now by seven feet, you said.
Right.
But you're gonna make it with forty, you wanna take forty feet? Is it just, can it still be there with just the right-of-way? Somebody else actually, he needs to own the land. Oh, you need to own the land, okay. And, uh-
Because I was wondering that myself, like you were saying, does, right-of-way?
Right-of-way doesn't count.
Right-of-way don't-
You wouldn't be able to build on it. You need the forty feet. Okay, so you wanna apply to us for a variance to, to modify your existing lot to a-
Okay.
However many feet frontage it will be after you remove the forty feet.
Okay, now, I have-
Now, that other lot has nothing to do with the variance. You get that, you'll be able to sell that house off and still keep the place with the board.
That's what I'd like to do.
That's what you need to do.
Because I have a lot of, like, changes coming up in the next few months.
You too?
Uh, wicked.
Okay.
Um, there was something else, and you blew it right out of my mind.
He has that effect on people.
I did.
Judge Rock.
I know, I'm sorry.
You wanna be an, uh, all kinds of-
I know what it is. I've been talking with Nicole. My wife's been talking with her. We're new at this. We're, we're trying to get through, but I don't understand it. I'm not smart like you guys.
What's your question?
The question is, we go online, like she tells us, and you bring up this paperwork, and then you want numbers.
Yes. Numbers.
I don't get it.
The numbers will correspond, Steve, to this book right here, which you can ask to get the zoning by law book. The numbers that I, they're, we're asking for correspond to.
The variance you're asking for.
The variance you're asking for.
Yeah, but how do you find that in there? That, that, that's what I'm.
Ask him.
Come visit me and I'll, I'll help you out a lot. You will?
I will.
All right.
He's good, Joe.
Nicole said she could give me a, give me a booklet or something on it, because we go online and it says no, no access to it.
We usually charge them for those books.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll buy a book if you want.
Are they usually charged for access to the internet? No, I'm just.
No, but just, just for the record, that.
Bylaws.
That bylaw is online through our website. So it is, it is accessible.
It is accessible, I, I, my wife tried to go on and couldn't get into it.
That's, yeah.
Residents are still having problems getting on through that town website. Comes up as a four oh four error, it's probably what your wife has said, is when it comes up, the symbol that comes up on the.
Check with Jim and he'll get you the proper paperwork.
Bring the paperwork into me, call first, make sure I'm there, come in and see me, I'll help you fill it out, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Good job. Let's see.
Somebody give him the copy?
Yes, yes.
Steve, would you like this copy?
Yeah, I would. Thank you.
But you're asking for a variance for frontage.
Right, that's what I want.
It would be under that, that section of that book.
Just have to find it in here.
Find it in there.
All right, thank you.
I don't know off the top of my head if it's.
Thank you.
You will?
So I can come to the next meeting then?
I'll try to show you what we're looking for, all right? This person came to us and they were asking for a variance, uh, review and discuss, and it was variance for twenty-five, ten, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-seven, forty. Those will be the numbers that correspond in there that that's your, inside the book, okay?
Inside the. Thank you.
All right, moving right along here. You wanna do, uh, review and discuss citizen plan and training colla, colla?
Sure.
Okay. Do you have any input on that?
Which one are we looking at here?
It's under the thing, is review and discuss act of citizen plan and training collaborative. Does anybody wanna attend the classes?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have spoken with our administrative assistant, and I would like to attend the class on October twenty-ninth, which is being held at Serp Ed. And that's at seven P M, and also I believe there's a fall of class to that on November second at the same location.
I'm okay with that, is it required that a fee be paid by the board for attendance?
It would be thirty-five dollars per class.
Anybody got any problem? Anybody else wanna go attend any of these classes?
Oh, me neither.
Mr. Gill would like to attend.
You would like to attend?
Yes, because it's, it's designed for newbies.
Specifically those classes?
Those in town, right? Yes.
Are they before or after your confirmation? They have a series of, series of, uh, people you have to interview before you get confirmed, you understand that?
Those are both after.
Is it before or after?
It is after. Next Wednesday he will be confirmed by.
Okay, so he, it's covered, it's worth it. Can't pay for a regular citizen unless it's a board.
I'm not a regular citizen, I'm just.
Not anymore.
I'm a stranger.
You sign on with me, it's for life, remember that. I'll want you forever.
Can I get a motion on that, please, Mr. Chairman?
Hey, somebody wanna entertain a motion? I'm not supposed to motion, because I'm where I am.
The motion is to what exactly?
To allow Tim and Jim to, uh.
Oh, okay.
John.
Yes, I'll make the motion for a little.
It's gonna take me a while.
Tim and John to, um, attend the meetings that they picked out.
At least you know what I look like.
I'll second that.
Well, you got me there.
And, um.
Except, uh, I'm sorry, Tim, you said yours was on the, on the, uh, the second?
October twenty-ninth it is, well, I believe it was, I thought it was November second.
I see November first, November fifth, so it's not in order.
Um, it should be, it should be, um.
I just wanted to make sure you had the right date, that's all.
Planning. One, which is on the twenty-ninth, and.
There's one.
Planning two is at Serp Ed, I'm sorry, that's November fifth.
Okay, that's right, I just wanted to make sure we had the right date, that's all.
I'm sorry, I have something else on my agenda. But that will be November fifth. And, um, I just asked the administrative assistant just to send us both out an email with confirmation to move you to attend. Thank you. Mr. Gill, I'll speak with you after the meeting. I have some other stuff for you too.
Okay, moving right along here.
We, we made a motion, there was a second, we.
We haven't voted.
We haven't voted yet.
Uh, somebody seconded it?
Yep.
On favor?
Okay, all right.
Someone's gotta keep you online.
Well, there's so much here that, I, I'm overwhelmed with all of this, it's too much for me to.
How do I?
I know. Review and discuss act and allow editing a new application. This is our second new application thing, right? It's been changed?
Yes. That's in the last page you had it.
All right, what are we reviewing and discussing?
Mr. Chairman, um, recently, if I may, if I may get into this, um, recently it became apparent that our new application, although it clears up a lot of the previous hiccups, uh, it caused a few hiccups itself. And in the, um, in the application I provided, um, highlighted, I think it should be read, um, on the first page, application fee, I wrote seven fifty each, because, um, people had applied to a, a variance and a special permit and only paid for seven fifty. And it would be both.
Oh, that's a package.
As seven fifty, so I changed that text.
Stuff for variance and a special permit.
Yep.
This is the application. It is, yeah, okay.
And then at the bottom of that first page, I added some text onto number four and number five, clarifying, um, again, that the seven fifty is for each variance or special permit or appeal. And I also wanted to change the text regarding the tax status, um, to kind of clear up some of the previous hiccups that people.
Yep.
Yep, tax issues before then. On the second page, I'm all set, third page, I'm all set, fourth page, again, I changed some language on tax status application form, uh, to clarify what's needed there. Again, uh, number, I guess the new number eight, I also changed to talk about the variance and special permit, um, and to include some language regarding the timeframe in which it's needed to be acted on.
So seven.
Seven and eight at the very bottom of page.
And how much longer is the time?
Um, I believe it's one year for special permit and two years for variance to be acted on.
I'm not sure. Before they start working on it, it's two years, isn't it, Jim?
I'd have to look it up to be sure.
I don't think we can just wave our wand and change that, can we?
I don't think, no, you can't, cause somebody, general law. I don't have that in front of me though.
We need to correct that anyway. I don't know what the, I thought it was two years in an application, it was a law.
If you wanted to make the motion, you can just motion that that would reflect whatever the big, general law is.
All right, let's make that, I'll make that motion that this condition reflect with mass general law.
Which, what do we, which one?
The timeline, on timelines.
Okay.
Page four, number eight.
Page four, number eight, okay.
So, the motion.
And I'll get an official copy of that.
Mass general law.
Just.
You're gonna make a motion to change number eight to meet the requirements of.
Let me just read to this a little bit more, so I can get a little bit better on.
So the current number seven, Nicole?
Yes. Tax application status.
This one, what's this seven right here?
Nicole.
The advertisement notice.
Oh, I had, um, I believe I had removed something that was referring to the other page in this as a, a helpful hints.
Okay.
There was a line that said, please refer to the helpful hints, since it was the second page.
So this advertisement number, is that gonna be number?
That would be number seven.
Okay, so it's like on stage seven.
And then that number seven's gonna go.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That seven's gonna be eight? Eight's gonna be nine? Gotcha.
Nicole, I think, and then mass general law, I think I, I think it's a year for both. I think, it's on, on.
I wanted to know where you got the information from, because as far as I know, person doesn't have to record anything unless they want to.
Right.
Okay, but it isn't gonna expire because of the fact that they didn't record it. The variance will run out if it's a variance that we issued, but something that's like a, a, the variance of special permit is granted, they might choose not to record it. I'm not sure if it covers them, whether they start the, the process, something has to be done on it, either it's sold to someone else or something that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I tried to include a line in there that says.
Where did this even come from? Was there some change that someone wanted to make?
Yes, there was a, a bit of confusion on how long, um, the decision was active before it had to be re-applied.
Okay.
Um, I, I had read somewhere that it was one year for one and two years.
Well, I know, I thought it was two.
However, I will look into that.
Yeah.
I did think it was two.
I'll, I'll clarify that, that's, that's.
He's got it right here.
I, I, I believe it's the same thing you're referring to, but.
Okay, um.
Let's just make.
Lapse, it says lapse.
Yeah, it's a three thirty, uh, page three thirty-two in the, uh, mass general laws.
Read it to us.
Well, so it says, uh, chapter ten, section ten, it's, um, lapse of special permits or variances, mass general law, chapter forty. Section ten states that if the rights authorized by a variance are not exercised within one year of the date of grant of such variance, such rights shall allow, shall lapse.
That's the part of our grants, you're to say and record.
Well, I, that's what I mean, the, the granted, like.
It's granted, but, uh.
Well, the, the sentence that I tried to include in there, not regarding recording, uh, states the decision must be acted upon.
All right, something has to be done, shovel has to go in the ground or something.
Right, and that's where I was trying to clarify that it's not just recording it, it's, you have to utilize it.
That's just, that's what I mean by the rights are authorized, so like, if the rights are not, the rights authorized by variance are not exercised, that, I mean, it's just that like, once it's granted, it has to be used. But this has, uh, special permits or variance, and it doesn't say.
If the right is granted and the property is sold, it automatically doesn't, doesn't run out of time. Cause it was sold as a buildable lot or a visited, granted lot with a variance, that permit, that's why, that's how they get around it. But I'm not sure, you know.
Right, we were wondering if it was one year for.
It's one year.
But is it two years for, for special permit? According to this, it seems to be one year for both, but.
For both.
More, more research will probably be required, but based on this, I don't see anything saying a special permit would be different.
Well, what is it, Jim, what is it on a building permit?
Uh, it's, you have to act on it within six months.
Within six months.
And then there's a break in service.
Well, where did we, where did I come up with this two-year thing?
You may be referring to demolition and reconstruction.
Okay.
After two years, or.
That's what that is, you have to act on it two years.
Right, or if you have a non-conforming use, and it's been there for longer than twenty-four months, then you don't have any rights of non-conforming.
You lose that right.
Right.
You're built, uh, you're still to do something with it, but it has to conform.
Right, exactly. Yeah, no, you, you, you need to just pick that number, it's there, just, might be for a different thing, that's all.
All right, if that's what the law is, have it reflect that, that's all.
That's what I mean, but it seems like to me.
No, it's fine with me. I didn't wanna exceed something, we didn't have the authority to do it.
I just wanna, um, go back to, uh, the instructions for the petition on the number seven, um, is it fifteen and eight days or fifteen and seven days for notification was made?
Um, it's fifteen and, it's the Tuesday bef, the week before, so seven days, and, you know, eight days and fifteen days. The Tuesday, um, before, so, for example, today's the seventeenth. It would be the ninth and the second for this to be cleared, for the Gazette posting. So that would be seven days. Eight and fifteen.
Okay.
So, um, continuing into that packet, I also changed the very last page, um, to again state per variance, special permit and appeal, just so it's clarified again.
You happy with that?
I am.
Well.
If the board's okay with that. Um, I would also ask the board, if possible, that I, um, am allowed to change this application as needed, so.
Make this, make any notifications that prior to our, Steve, that there's a change.
So as it stands right now, um, what are we looking at? We're looking at, um, some information regards to number nine on the instructions for the petition. To be, um, looked at to make sure the information on this application is correct. And that would be, um, the decision must be acted upon within one year to ensure it does not expire.
Oh, the, the one that will be number eight?
Yes.
Yes.
Wait, now, the last one is gonna be number, actually it's gonna be number nine.
Yes, that's, yeah, correct.
So it will be number nine?
Seven is still gonna be in place, because seven was the every time, it was just happened, it was restricted.
Yes. I did remove one line, which I guess used to be, I don't know why I did that, but, um, number eight was stricken because I, I felt it was a bit, a bit redundant. It just says, check out the reasons for petition, which is for following page, so.
Oh, right.
But again, any of these changes I can get back or adjust it.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna make a motion that we take this, um, application instructions from petition are under advisement until the necessary corrections are made by the administrative assistant. And then, um, I would like to make a motion that, um, well, we wouldn't be able to act on that until next month, where this has been acted upon and voted on, so we approve it. And then we can act on the administrative assistant allowing her to make any changes within the document itself. So we have to wait, so most likely we wouldn't be until next month, depending on what the meeting night would be. So I'm just gonna make that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we take this document under advisement until we have more clarification in regards to, um, page four, the instructions for the petitioner, which would be, uh, number eight, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, uh, number nine, which would be, um, the timeframe for the decision to expire. Or, I'm sorry, to, uh, be recorded with the registry deeds, whether it would be one year or two years.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No.
On favor?
Aye.
Now, Jim, if someone in a case like this, we were just discussing here, uh, special permit, they go in and record it, they don't act on it, still runs out, you know it's recorded, right?
Unless they.
Come to us.
Take a building permit or transfer the property out to another name. That's called executing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, moving right along here, already got it. Uh, review and discuss November twenty-first meeting, it's the night before Thanksgiving, okay? My discussion is, I wanted to know who was leaving that can't make it here on Wednesday night.
Who's leaving?
Yeah, cause it's the night before Thanksgiving. Is somebody leaving that they can't move? I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I, I did add that as I knew people would be able to travel for their families, and I thought. Um, Marguerite had.
Do you need the time? It's okay if you say yes.
It's.
I don't have a problem, what day we meet? It's gonna be before Thanksgiving dinner or after Thanksgiving dinner, doesn't matter, doesn't matter.
Um, please be advised, Mr. Chairman, that.
It has to be fifteen day notice in the paper and all the rest of that, right?
Yep.
Okay, so this isn't just a wave of the wand, you go.
Oh, no, I, I'm well aware, um, but, um, please be aware that Marguerite had told me this morning that she will not be able to attend the November twenty-first meeting as she will be traveling for Thanksgiving.
All right, what's more important, is there anything on there that we're supposed to have Marguerite here for?
Um, potentially.
Mr. Zola. Is it Zola or Zola?
Zola.
Zola, Zola, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, the fourteenth would be the week before, the twenty-eighth would be the week after, okay? 14th would be probably a little short notice to meet or, I'd have to change.
Let's do 28, then, you guys still okay with the 28? We meet in the fourth Wednesday instead of the third, keep it simple.
That's enough notice for me to look to tell work, I, I could change my day off, so that should be fine.
Well, that's right, too, that is the middle of hunting season, isn't it?
It'll be dark at 4:30 anyway. I already have it figured out, don't worry about it, we're good.
Didn't, you're in to tell.
Uh, hopefully I'm done hunting by that day, hopefully I'm done hunting by that day.
I want to be done on that, but, actually, it's early this year too, man.
Monday, I still.
I'm okay with that, I need a motion.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, change our November meeting from the 21st to November 28th.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
That, aye.
Yeah. Okay, let's get down to the real business here. We need to approve the minutes for September 19th. Anybody have any thoughts?
We have to do that as well.
What's that?
Review the five-year goals.
Oh, yeah.
Not to interrupt you, I'm sorry, but.
I, I like, I like you 25% last night.
Something's in, gone forgotten, that's all.
Now, what is that five-year goal? Does anybody have anything that they would like to have the zoning board of appeals attain in the next five years?
Well, we got our fifth mem- our sixth member, so that's.
That's right, we wanted that, we talked.
I wanted the post to move near my desk to the upstairs, but, uh.
I think that one's.
What I would like to discuss in the goals in the next five years is something that took place last night at the town meeting. You guys probably weren't aware of it, but zoning, the planning board, uh, had a bill, were you there?
I was.
Do you know, do you know if it was passed?
It passed, so it'll be a waste?
No, no.
No?
This is on the, uh, marijuana, Houston.
Oh, yes, it passed, it passed, so, Article 21, yeah.
The permits be granted through the planning board.
That passed.
Okay? Uh, it, uh, really takes away from the zoning board of appeals authority. This is the second time in two years that it's been done, it's been done on the commercial property of, uh, for solar. Where they become the ones that grant variance and stuff, where it's always been in the past. I just want the other board members to be aware of the fact that when something like this happens, it takes away a little bit of the power of the zoning board. I know that in the particular case with the, uh, solar panels and stuff, it's just kind of, it picks away at what is actually taking place in the future. I really think that it's a difficult situation for a planning board to grant or work on a project and, and, uh, permanent plan, and then have to be the deciding factors, like, uh, they have to appeal to the, the planning board for a variance and, uh, it's like the fox walks in the hen house type of thing, it's very difficult if you've already had plans on it. And we want to be careful in the future, we don't allow this to happen, without an argument anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I was at that meeting and I will tell you, um, the way it was presented, now granted, I don't know the history of it, didn't know the history of it, I'm just in that audience, but the way it was presented and the way it was couched, it was approved unanimously, and I think part of the reason was, the way it was presented, all of us assumed that this was something that was already, had wiggled its way through everybody, every committee and had been signed off on.
I, I appreciate your input on that, but I'm not sure that's exactly what took place, but it was nice of you to explain that to us. But what has happened in here was a mistake that was made in the beginning, and they're trying to take care of it. The issue online is, when something like this happens, you need to get out and express your opinion, because the people that voted on this last night were probably people that were, the majority of the people in the room weren't.
No, a lot of.
They weren't, uh, educated on it.
Majority of people in the room were residents who have only been residents for a short amount of time.
And there was a lot of townspeople there as well.
There were, there were.
Well, I'm, we're getting away from what I'm trying to, the message I'm trying to get to the board is, you want to be careful as to give up any of your authority and, as you go on in the future, because it just takes away from what the actual part of this was, and I'm not sure, uh, if someone really wanted to, uh, fight this out, you can't have two people making, uh, granting, uh, the, the, the planning board being the planning board and then granting variances and special permits when they have a previous interest in the thing, they're biased, is the point I'm trying to make. I don't, I don't think it's a good idea. I know that this particular situation had to go forward and they needed to act on it, uh, very quickly, but now the authority for anything in the future is taken away from the zoning board, and that's something you don't want to, you don't want to do going forward. In that, well, enough said.
Totally agree.
Anyway, now, we wanted, you were going to make me go back and discuss these goals of the ZBA. That was my goal, don't let this happen in the future. Really, am I wrong on this, Jim?
No, absolutely not.
Because.
This board should be here in special permits and variances.
Always, always, because, and I'll be honest with you, if I was on someone applying to the pl- planning board, nothing against anybody there, this is just the board, and they didn't find in my favor because they had a previous disclosure of working on the project prior to that, that's, it's like I said, uh, let's get divorced and use my lawyer.
Yeah, it's checks and balances.
Checks and balances.
I agree.
Just keep that in mind, people, that's all. Okay, can we, do you have anything to do, you've already submitted your goals.
I did.
I love, I love this list.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, uh, that's what you're going to send to them? Then they'll leave us all until this time next year?
If you would like me to.
I'm good. I think we ought to get down here and approve the minutes for next month, or last month.
Um, do you want to approve this, I mean, do we need to vote on this at all, or is it just?
No, I don't, come on, don't tell me this needs to vote. You guys scared me.
Because they're the ones that are asking for the five-year goals, gentlemen, I believe. The Board of Selectmen is asking for this, I don't know if we have to vote on this.
That's why I was asking you.
Because they're the ones that are asking for the five-year goals from each department in town.
Yeah, well, is it?
But is it required, is it necessary, I don't know.
I don't know who's requiring it. Five-year goals, the zoning board of appeals has one purpose in town, it grants variances and it grants special permits. Other than that, we don't have to, we're not going to go on to get further access on this, whatever is coming to us as goals. We don't have, like, you understand, we, that's all our authority is on, either we go in favor of the bill inspector or we, because he sends them to us most times, they've come to you and said, you can't do this, come to us and ask for a variance. And I mean, as far as changing goals.
Let's take care of this now, so when they ask you five years from now, we'll just give them the same goals, five years from now.
Okay, okay, we'll make a motion, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this was brought up at a, um, department head meeting. Mallory, our, uh, town administrator, had asked the departments to think on five-year goals, so that's why I brought it up at our last meeting, so.
You did your job.
That's just my, that's just my, my short list, if you would like me to present that to them.
So I think you should refer to the department head over there, unless you make a decision.
I mean, I don't think that these are anything that's going to be changing our authority at all, I think it's just waiting for us to be a better board, enjoying the cake based on what we do normally. Be a, or, more organized professional board, which I see no harm in that.
Well, maybe, because you guys with the, uh, all of this experience with the, uh, computers, you kind of like this, uh, being on TV and all this other stuff. But I think we should just keep things back the way it used to, keep it simple, back before the war.
Yes, so, oh, I, no more television.
Are your ratings going to go up with all this stuff?
Yes, yes, they will.
The questions on the table? I mean, Nielsen Board is in town.
Zoning board gets good ratings, some of the best.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'm going to make a motion that, um, we approve the September 19th, 2018 minutes as prepared by our administrators.
Thank you, Tim.
I'll second that.
Is any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, this is important, we got to make sure we pay the bills. Payroll was $2,441.05, right? Is that how much?
That's correct.
That was the payroll and bills paid, there was no bills paid?
No bills paid.
Okay.
Chairman, I would make a motion that, um, we accept a payroll of $2,441.05 as prepared by our administrative assistant.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is a, we, we are going to meet on the 28th of, that's all taken care of. That has to be notified in the paper as well, of the town.
Yes, and I will post that. Um, Mr. Chairman, can I get a ruling on the five-year goals? Do you want me to present that?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I will make a motion to present to the Board of Selectmen the five-year goals of the ZBA.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
One more thing.
Uh-oh.
Sorry.
Public input.
There's a very good possibility that your next meeting, November 28th, will be held next door in the upstairs meeting.
Oh, okay. Oh, excellent.
Yes, so I think, um, everything is on track to have it done by mid-November, so that would be more than enough time for you to have your meeting there. I would just like public to know that, um, it may be next door, so if you come here and you hear crickets, uh, take a walk next door.
Tell them to check their local listings. Well, that's we have to notify.
That's awesome.
Can we just, um, just in case that, that possibility does arise that we do meet next door, could we have some type of signage, just put up, just to notify the residents that we have a meeting next door? Put it up at the door.
We can do that.